I don't spit.
We're at six fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Always the card. See, I don't.
Junior C team in patrol.
Oh, you're at seven o'clock.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of council, staff, and members of the public to our February the fifth, two thousand and twenty-four council meeting and call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson, Clerk Operations Clerk, for the roll call, please.
Thank you. Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara.
Present.
Counselor Patel.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field. Mayor Lucely.
Present.
We have the court, your worship.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I'd like to ask you at this time for the land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge this land on which we are gathered today as part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Ottawa, and the Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishna Bag. The town of Petrolia is located on the land associated with the Huron Treaty, number twenty-nine of eighteen twenty-seven. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with the land and the indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. At this time, I'd like to request that council declare conflict of interest either now or at the appropriate time and fill out the necessary paperwork. Seeing none, we'll go to the adoption of the agenda. You have a motion in front of you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Thank you. And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as presented the agenda of the February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four regular session of council.
Any discussion from council? All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. We also have the minutes of a regular council meeting held on January the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counsel O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll ask council, any questions, errors, or omissions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes, opposed, that motion carries. All right, at this time, we'll have a moment of reflection. I'm going to ask everyone to please stand. Thank you. Please be seated. That'll bring us to the council roundtable announcements, and tonight, we'll start with Counsel O'Hara, please.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Counselor Wells.
Just another plug for the Petrolia Heritage Open House, February seventeenth, eleven to four P. M., right here in Victoria Hall. We have all kinds of displays and groups coming, and we'll have old photos on loops in here and in the lobby. It's going to be a great event.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you, your worship. Recently attended the Roma Conference in Toronto. We had opportunity to sit and speak with the Parliamentary Assistant Minister of Education, Stephen Leche, trying to find out if they were able to offer us any updates on daycare funding, childcare funding for the area. Unfortunately, the message is, we're waiting for the feds. So they're expecting the federal government to offer some initiatives soon, so we're kind of in a holding pattern until then.
Thank you. Counselor Hyatt.
I have nothing to share. Thank you.
All right, I do have a few things I'd like to give council. One is, I attended a meeting of Lampton County Council on Wednesday, January seventeenth, and will continue to keep council informed. I also attended the Petrolia and Innes Gillan Agricultural Society annual meeting on Tuesday, January the sixteenth, and brought greetings on behalf of the council and staff of the town of Petrolia. I took part in the Chamber of Commerce Business After Five at the Big Family Brewing Company in Point Edward on Wednesday, January seventeenth. It was a packed house and a good time by all. I also attended the Chamber of Commerce Breakfast with Bob Bailey, MPP, and his update on the province in Lampton County on Thursday, January the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at the Sunbridge Hotel in Point Edward. There was a question period after his speech that was very good in a worthwhile meeting. I attended the Lampton Federation of Agricultural Annual General Meeting, held on Friday, January the nineteenth, at the Wyoming Fairgrounds. It was well-run and very informative. I also met with Mrs. Chantel Corr, Economic Development Officer for the Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership, on Wednesday, January thirty-first, along with Mr. Rick Charlebois, C. A. O. Treasurer, and Mrs. Larissa Ellsworth, Director of Marketing, Arts, and Communication. That was a very worthwhile meeting. And I also attended a sneak peek at the opening of Sun Coast Natural Health, operated by Mrs. Sandra Starbuck, at forty-two fifteen Petrolia Line on Wednesday, January thirty-first, and brought greetings on behalf of council staff and wish them the very best. That's all that I have. We'll move on to item number nine, which is correspondence for information. We have items A to E. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor. Unless there's any items council would like to pull out and deal with separately. Counselor Wells.
Could we pull out item nine C, please, for a separate resolution?
Okay. Counselor Hyatt, your worship.
Sorry. Okay, Counselor Hyatt?
Same.
Same thing? Which one is that?
Nine C.
All right, so we'll deal with A, B, D, and E. So I'll ask, did I get a move in a second to put that on the floor? Well, I moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. Any discussion regarding those items of correspondence? All except for C. If not, any discussion? All those in favor of approving that? Opposed, that motion carries. Now we'll go to item C. Counselor Wells, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, I would like to move that we support this resolution to provide a specific training program for municipal employees on heavy equipment.
Okay, thank you. I'll need a second. Seconded by Counselor Hyatt. Any discussion? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that? Opposed, that motion carries. That goes to correspondence for consideration. Motion, there's none received. Delegations and presentations, we have none tonight. That'll take us to number twelve, which is council announcements. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor, please. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion.
Thank you. That is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive as information only, the February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four community announcements as presented.
Any discussion from council? Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, your worship. Just that the RCMP musical ride is going on sale very soon.
That's great news. Thank you. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll bring us to the first opportunity for anyone wishing to address council.
And we do have two registered delegates, your worship. We have first, Mr. Louis Britannic, and second, Mr. David Britannic.
Okay. Louis, would you like to come forward, please, state your name and address for the record?
Your worship and members of town council, I'm Louis Britannic. I live at five twenty-nine Valentina Street in a house that I built in Country View subdivision. It was the third house that I built in the new subdivision thirty years ago. When I first started Country View, the majority of the cost of servicing the lots was paid by the developer. The town had a what-can-I-do-to-help attitude. The town paid for the stop signs, the street signs, and did the engineering review. There was no charge for any meetings with the town or the county. Back then, Larry Garrett would install the street signs and the stop signs at no charge. Now the developer pays for all the costs associated with the development. The developer pays for the engineering, the inspections, any meetings with the town or the county, the curbs, the asphalt, the storm and sanitary sewer, the underground hydro and water, the surveying, the streetlights, the stop signs, the sidewalks, the pumping station, the stormwater management pond, and the mailboxes. Just so you understand, we are not complaining. That is the cost of doing business. It used to take a couple months to get a subdivision approved. Now it takes years. Before you can start, there are numerous studies that have to be done, many that were never required before. They, these reports, the reports needed include a planning justification report, a traffic impact study, and noise feasibility study, environmental site assessment, an archaeological assessment, a floodline mapping, and a geotechnical report, just to name a few. These must all be done before we can proceed, and they all add to the cost. The developer also gives the town five percent of the land for parks, or pays five percent of the value of the land in lieu of parkland at the town's discretion, whichever they prefer. The proposed new development charges, the largest expenditure is for parks, making up almost sixty-five percent of the new tax. In our subdivision, the town has always asked for cash in lieu of parkland, except for the very last phase that we did. After designing the subdivision based on the town wanting the land instead of cash, the town asked me if we would give them the cash instead. The town's reasoning was that they had, would have to maintain the park, and that fewer and fewer people were using parks. If fewer and fewer people are using parks, then why does it make sense to spend more money on parks? On the front page of The Independent, dated January the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the headline reads, "Petrolia Why Needs More Revenues," says Hyatt. How do we get more revenue? We need more people living in Petrolia and paying property taxes. More people means a broader tax base. It means more people shopping downtown, buying groceries, clothes, and eating out, and making our downtown businesses more profitable. A development charge will make housing less affordable in Petrolia, increase the cost of slowing and slowing growth, meaning fewer new people paying taxes and supporting the Petrolia's economy. Development charges are just another tax on the home buyer, which is added to the cost of the house. I attended all candidates' night before the last election. Each and every one of you talked about the importance of keeping housing affordable. Development charges increase the cost of new housing and slows growth. Instead of adding taxes on a new home, Petrolia should focus on speeding up the development process so it doesn't take so long. Getting new houses built increases buy of new housing, which will also, which will make houses in Petrolia more affordable. This will help keep our downtown merchants prosperous by having more customers and widens the tax base in town, given that the town, giving the town a larger budget that allows the council to focus on what the town actually needs. Thank you.
Just, Mr. Britannic, before you go.
Any questions from council?
If not, thank you, Mr. Britannic, for coming to address council.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to address council? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Hello, your worship and council. I am David Britannic. I live at nine sixty-seven Megan Crescent in Sarnia, and I'm also a local Realtor. I have a few questions about the development charge study that I think is next on the agenda, and I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but I think these should be answered prior to council's vote. First, how much money has been spent on equipment for new parks in the past ten years? I think it's an important metric to know to justify spending millions of dollars on new park equipment. Spending one point two five million in three parks seems like a lot of money, especially seeing as the number of people per household is diminishing, meaning fewer kids to play at these parks. When developing, developers must either give five percent of their land or the land value to the town as cash in lieu of parkland. How much money has been received as cash in lieu of parkland over the past ten years, and how much has been spent? Is the money received from cash in lieu earmarked only for parks, or does it go into the general fund of the town? Another large cost is the cost of a new fire truck at one point one million dollars. Is Innes Gillan required to pay part of the cost of the new truck, and has that been accounted for? What happens if, like what happened in August of this past year, Innes Gillan decides not to approve the purchase of a new truck? Will the town move forward on purchasing a new truck without Innes Gillan involved? In the report, there's also mention of having a new report made in two or three years after it is known what grants the town receives regarding these projects. Would the development charges be reviewed at that time, reducing the development charges by the same amount received as grants going forward? Would those who paid development charges at the higher rate be refunded? It's also my understanding that the town of Petrolia is applying for a ten million dollar grant from the federal government to speed up development and lower the cost, making housing more affordable. How can you ask for the federal government's assistance in speeding up development and reducing development costs while adding a tax on all new homes that will both add to the cost of new homes and, by doing so, slow down development? Petrolia already has a slow growth rate at zero point eight four percent per year. I would be worried about slowing that even further with the addition of new taxes on growth. Thank you.
Before you go, can you leave a copy of those?
Maybe you already have a copy, yes.
Okay, then I'll, yeah, I'll refer that to administration to answer some of those questions. Any questions from council for Mr. Britannic? I can just do one real quick, and that is in regards to the money you pay towards parks, that cash. It does go back into parks. That's my understanding. It has to. So that is, but we will certainly do our best to answer your questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming to address council. Anyone else wishing to address council at this time? I'll ask Mrs. Pearson, do you have anything else? Anyone else?
No, I have no further registrants, your worship.
Okay, thank you. And just before we go on, I will state, we are not approving development charges tonight. They will be approved on February twentieth, if approved, or council will discuss it and vote at that time. We'll move on to number fourteen, and we have here a report from Mr. Rick Charlebois, C. A. O. Treasurer, regarding the development charges study update. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the chief administrative officer and treasurer dated February the fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Mr. Charlebois, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Just the key point, and it's in my briefing note to council, is this is infrastructure that's needed, like the pumper that we talk about. So it's either the current taxpayers pay, or the new taxpayers pay, or a combination. And with the provincial legislative changes about a year, about a year and a half ago, the most, and it's in the note as well, that if council approves, the development charge is eighty percent. So it's already, province is already forcing a sharing of current residents and future residents.
All right, thank you, Mr. Charle. Any questions? Counselor O'Hara.
I have a real problem with the, with development charges. You know, we're all wearing these one fifty shirts. We've got along for a hundred and fifty years without development charges, and now we think we just absolutely can't get along without them. And Mr. Britannic is absolutely correct. It's just a tax, is what it is. It's another further tax on the homeowner, people that are going to be moving here, or hopefully moving here. We've got a development going, one small development in process in Petrolia, and it's certainly going slow, you know, and I don't think anybody would question that. It's moving very slowly, and by adding development charges, it's going to go slower. It's more difficult to attract people if you're going to add prices to the end house. I would certainly like to see, I know we're not voting on it tonight, but I would like to see this deferred for one year and see what kind of grants we do get, and hopefully the interest rates will maybe start to edge down and encourage growth in Petrolia. So I'm going to stick to.
I think, and that's the discussion we will have on February twentieth, when we actually get into discussing the actual bylaw and what you want to do with it. So you can bring it up at that time, Counsel O'Hara. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you. Just a comment here on the updated study, and specifically around the Parks and Recs projects that we've defined as the most critical Parks and Recs projects that we want to look at over the next period of time. I think we, we removed a few from the list that I think have been long-term projects that maybe some of the community is really interested in. So I'm wondering if we should be revisiting that priority list for the Parks and Recs projects.
I think Mr. Charlebois dealt with that in his report to take a look at that later on. But for those present, I think it should be clear, we, we did make an adjustment when, if you like, to take a single family home, it's going to be thirteen thousand roughly development charges. It's now been readjusted down to somewhere around seventy-five hundred dollars. But again, we'll get into a full discussion at the next meeting on that.
I think this list actually has an impact on what the development charge fee may be, right? So for example, Parks and Recs list has, you know, we need to add another ball diamond, right? But, you know, we had the school, you know, the council meeting with the students from the school, and they said, we need a, you know, a bike park, right? So we're, so we removed that from the list. So we've reduced the cost, but we were actually taking away a project that may be some benefit to the community overall, right? So whether the question is, we needed to diversify of what options we're giving for people to use. So that's why I think there is some value in reviewing that list. You know, maybe the Parks and Rec Committee can look at it, and the Parks and Rec Committee can come back and say, these are the projects that we think may be critical going forward. Just a, just a comment.
We can maybe consider that, or I can have Mrs. Bullock look into that. Okay. All right, you have a motion before you. Any other discussion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That moves us on to the report from Mrs. Annette Strand, Deputy Treasurer, Finance Manager, regarding the heritage tax rebate. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Wells. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the deputy treasurer, finance manager, dated the fifth of February, two thousand and twenty-four, regarding the two thousand and twenty-four heritage tax rebates.
And as noted in the report, back in two thousand and twenty-one, we increased that rebate from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent. Any discussion from council? Yes, Counselor Hyatt?
Just a question. How do, how do homes apply for the rebate? Like, eleven homes doesn't seem like a lot of homes. I feel like we maybe have a significant more number of homes in the town than a lot of.
Do you want to be stood?
Sure.
Mrs. Pearson, go ahead.
We have available online our heritage rebate application form. There is a deadline on it, obviously, to, to come into budget impact. They simply complete that, forward it to my office, and then the deputy treasurer and I review it with the heritage committee, and heritage makes sure that they demake the criteria for it, and from there, we're golden. So.
How many homes we have on the?
That are eligible.
I wonder, Mrs. Strand, can you speak to that? Do you know how many, or how many homes we have?
That would be Counselor Wells, that would know our exact number. It used to be around thirty-five, like, like homes proper.
Right.
There, there are designated sites that aren't, don't qualify for this, but homes proper, thirty to thirty-five. So it is, the onus is on the homeowner to apply with a grant?
They're all aware that this is actually a grant?
Yeah, confidently, I can say they're aware. And there, there are a number of criteria. They have to be, they can't be in tax areas or anything like that.
Thank you, Counselor Wells. Mrs. Strand, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. All right, we've got a motion on the floor. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. We also have a report from Mr. Rick Charlebois, C. A. O. Treasurer, regarding the Housing Enabling Water Systems Fund Grant Program. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the chief administrative officer dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, regarding the Housing Enabling Water System Fund Grant Program.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And this is relating to the housing development at the other end of town, and it's a great project, three million dollars, and we're hoping that the province, if it's approved, will get seventy-three percent, and we'd have to put in twenty-seven percent. Any discussion from council? I think it's a great idea that staff are applying for that. Mr. Charlebois, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Certainly. This is a really good example of development charges. For example, this project, this three million dollar project to upsize the water main down along Petrolia Line down Oil Heritage. So if we don't have development charges, then if council side's not, then we would have to somehow figure out how we get that three million dollars. And to get three million dollars out of our water system would be very challenging, to say the least. The rates would have to go up a lot, and hopefully we get the grant, and we open up our DC charges in two, three years and adjust accordingly. But it's a really good example of why development charges.
Thank you, Mr. Charlebois. I think the point is, if there's no houses, we wouldn't have to spend that money.
Right, that's exactly it.
All right, Counselor Hyatt?
Sorry, one question. I think I've asked it before, but I forget the answer. When we, when we apply for these grants, and were you successful? Like, do we have to have the money upfront to pay for these, and then we're reimbursed the money, or does the money come in advance?
I'll let Mr. Charlebois speak to that. I'm not aware of us having to have the money upfront, but Mr. Charlebois, go ahead.
Certainly, through you, worship. There was a time, some of the federal grants used to, they used to let us, they used to front us the money before we paid the bill. But now, I think every one of them, we pay, and then we submit and get reimbursed.
We have to have the money upfront to do the project?
Not the whole amount of money.
But a portion.
But just, we, we pay the bill first, so it goes out of our cash flow, and then if we get the seventy-three percent grant, we get seventy-three percent back.
Some grants used to give us some of the portion upfront. They may not anymore, but we used to get a, like, maybe half or a portion of it. But whatever, we have to certainly finance the whole project. Any other questions from council? All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. We'll go on to operations. We have a report from Mr. Mike Thompson, Director of Operations, regarding the community safety zones. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the director of operations dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, regarding reporting back to the council in relation to community safety zone designated areas.
And as noted in the report, council be aware, we're, that the recommendation is not to proceed. All right, I'll open it up to council. Any discussion? Counselor Wells.
Through you. I just had some questions. Are there other considerations that can be made for traffic calming, especially when we do the sidewalks on Maple? Were they, in the area where it connects with Garfield? Is there, there are lots of different traffic calming things that you can do, and I'm wondering if anything would apply to this situation.
Mr. Thompson, would you like to speak to that?
Through you, worship. Yes, there is some other additional things we can add to the, to roads, to trap, to calm the traffic. I think as that development proceeds at the end of Garfield Street, through the phases, we should collectively, as the administration, look at some additional measures to calm the traffic, not only, you know, stop signs, but there could, I'm not suggesting a roundabout, but some sort of bump outs at the corner of Maple and Garfield, where it gets really wide there, or what have you. But I think it needs to be looked at, you know, as the subdivision grows in that area, but also in the southeast area of town as well. Correct?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Counselor Wells, go ahead.
And as a follow-up, what, what can be done until then, until we do something different at that corner?
Mr. Thompson?
Through you, worship. I always encourage residents to reach out to the OBP if they're noticing any speed or running of stop signs, what have you. So this is how it got brought up before. A resident on Garfield and on Derby Street wanted a stop sign, a three-way stop at Garfield and Maple and Derby and Holland. So stop signs aren't So stop signs aren't meant to reduce speed, that's not their intent, so, but I do encourage residents to reach out to the OPP, and the OPP are willing to work with us. I, Mrs. Pearson, reaches out to them on numerous occasions to have certain areas of town patrolled. So that's what I would suggest to residents.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Okay? Any other questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote, or ask Mr. Thompson, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Not this time, worship.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll call the vote, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us on to Parks and Recreation. We have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Clark. I will ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to endorse the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, and the Director of Marketing Arts and Communications dated February 5th, 2024, and that council approved the request to grant significant event status for the events for 2024 as detailed in the report, and that the clerk be provided, be directed to produce confirmation for use with the AGCO applications.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I just want to see, it's really great to see all these special events. I think it's great for the town and everyone. Any discussions from council regarding that motion? Counselor Hyatt?
Just wondering if we're getting any closer to releasing the band information, or?
I'm just going to ask, can you just speak into the?
Sorry, I'm just wondering if we're getting any closer to releasing the band information for the music festival. There's lots of, I think there's lots of buzz, and there's lots of people really interested, but I think there's really a lot of people that want to know what bands are coming.
Mrs. Ellsworth, can, are you, are we prepared to answer that, or can you answer that?
Through you, worship, I think it's the only question I've been answering myself recently. We're getting closer by the day. It is definitely a dance, it's a lot of back and forth. We started in August, and as soon as we're able, we will. I would say we're two-thirds of the way there.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellsworth. Is that okay? All right, back to council, any other questions? If not, I'll call the vote, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. We also have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation Facilities, regarding the road closures. I'll ask for a motion to put that on the floor, or a move by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to endorse the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities dated February 5th, 2024, regarding the road closures and parade requests on the specific dates and times as outlined in the report.
Again, the only comment I have is, again, that's great for the town. So any other questions from council? If not, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us now on to a report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Clerk Operations Clerk, regarding a site plan amendment completed under delegated authority in January 2024. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file the Clerk Operations Clerk's Report regarding Site Plan Amendment for Krabby Joe's located at 4236 Petroy Line in Petroya.
Any questions from council? Mrs. Pearson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, your worship, just more, more continued applications in the near future.
Okay, that's good, thank you. All right, seeing none, I'll call the vote, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. We have a report from Jessica Smith, Deputy Clerk, Human Resources Manager, regarding Committee of Adjustment December Meeting. You have a motion before you, I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor O'Hara, and this is in regards to a minor variance. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the Deputy Clerk, Human Resources Manager slash Committee of Adjustment Secretary, Jessica Smith, dated February 5th, 2024, regarding the December 2023 Committee of Adjustment Meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any questions from council? Ms. Smith, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll call the vote, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. We also have a report from Jessica Smith, Deputy Clerk, Human Resources Manager, regarding the business licenses and signed permits issued until January 2024. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Wells. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file the Deputy Clerk, Human Resource Manager's Report dated February 5th, 2024, regarding business license and signage permits issued to date.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any questions from council? While you're thinking, I just want to state, I think that's good news to see the number of new business licenses being issued, hopefully filling up those empty stores on the Main Street. Ms. Smith, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right. I'll call the vote, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us on to E, Fire Emergency and Management. We have a report from Rick Cousins, Director of Parks, Director of Public Safety and Fire Chief, regarding the announcements of the new recruits. You have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the Director of Public Safety and Fire Chief dated February 5th, 2024, regarding new PNEFD recruits.
They look nice, all dressed up. Any discussion from council? Chief Cousins, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. We also have a report from Mr. Rick Cousins, Director of Public Safety, Fire Chief, the fourth quarter for 2023. I'll have, I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the Director of Public Safety and Fire Chief dated this 5th day of February, 2024, regarding the fourth quarter of 2023 for the Petroy North Inneskillin Fire Department.
Any questions from council? Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you. Just wondering if in the quarterly report, we could get an update on the apparatus responses? So it kind of outlines, you know, what apparatuses are being used, and each of the emergencies that are happening in the town?
Chief Cousins, can you speak to that?
Yes, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I want to thank the chief for your report. Thank you for that. Any other discussion from council? If not, I'll call the vote, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us partly into the closed session under Section 239-2 of the Act. We have three items. One is a proposed or pending acquisition of disposition of land by the municipality or local board, 322 Eureka Street. The second item, a proposed or pending acquisition of disposal, disposition of land by the municipality or local board, 4184 Petroy Line. And the third one is personnel matters about an unidentifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, and the name is Geranium. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a move and a second to go into closed session. Moved by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that would be for the Council of the Town of Petroya to break from open session and move to closed session.
Any discussion from council? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. We'll move into closed session.